We are not.
Good evening, welcome to the Wednesday, July 5th, 2017, meeting of the Albion City Council. If you have a phone, I'd ask you to put it on silent. This meeting is called to order and we'll begin with a moment of silence. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd ask Clerk Domingo for a roll call.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
French.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here. Are there any comments from council this evening? Councilmember Reed, French, and Lawler.
I just want to say I'm very pleased. I've gotten a couple of calls from people in the community and one call I got, they were asking how could they donate money to Holland Park, of which I gave them that information, "You can send it to the city of Albion" and earmarked for Holland Park. She was very impressed with the park, she and her family was down, and so she wanted to do something to help, and I thought that was very, very nice. Other people, I've been getting calls there since June that are people who were there, been talking about the park and how nice it looks and everything, and I just want to say to the Parks Department, again, thank you so very much because they really worked hard out there, getting everything looking nice, getting everything in order, and with the new equipment that we had put in on the third with the youth corps from Battle Creek, it has really perfected up, and a lot of people in different cities outside of Albion who are larger than us are talking about us, and so that makes me feel good about it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to the council that participated in the Albion envisioning little gathering that we had, and I just wanted to say I appreciate you for doing that, because I was in charge of that, so thank you for helping me out, and I'll just also want to just say happy birthday to Jeanette Belated, Councilman Spicer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. The year one AmeriCorps Vista members, seven of our eight, will be ending their year of service this weekend, and so we are having a celebration of all that they've accomplished this year tomorrow afternoon from 3:30 to 6:00 at the Luddington Center in the collaboration space. There'll be some light hors d'oeuvres and some non-alcoholic beverages, and a chance for you to say thank you and to connect and find out what our vistas are doing next year after they finish their year of service. Second thing, one of our Vista members, Dorothy Feltonner, has been very active in creating a 501(c)(3), the Community Garden Initiative. There are now three community gardens throughout our city. All are seeking individuals who are interested in planting, so if you have an interest, please check out the food hub. There is our program throughout the rest of the summer to help train individuals on how to plant and how to plan to get those community gardens up and going. And finally, Cass Street here, right by City Hall in the Luddington Center, will be closed tomorrow, probably for two or three weeks, as they move north on the project of the downtown, so if you're trying to get to City Hall, you'll have to go around either on Michigan Avenue or Erie Street. So, that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you. Two, oh, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of reminders. To Tuesday, July 18th, the Albion Department of Public Safety will have a meeting at Bethel Church, which is on Washington Street, right near Holland Park. The title is Driving While Black, Policing While White. It's a very important conversation, and I'm happy with our police department's initiative to reach out to the community for those difficult conversations, so inviting you all to come participate in that. And every Tuesday at 5:00 PM at the old high school building on Watson Street, Leroy Bell is teaching a line dancing class, and I participated last week, and it was two hours of non-stop sweat and fun, so I invite you all to come out and participate in that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Two things. Dick Porter, who's involved with Community Gardens, reached out to me regarding if the city generated any kind of wood chips, maybe as a kind of excess for that, so I don't see Jim here, but when he's here, we can kind of talk about that. He reached out to me about that. And then also for tonight's agenda, could I have a motion to amend, to add, under presentations, a presentation from Mrs. Slater, the Sister City Committee? So moved. Moved in second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Are there any other comments from council this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we will move forward to presentations. Item A under presentations, proclamation for the AmeriCorps Vista members. Are they, they're all, okay. They're all using up, much of them have well-deserved vacation time left before they finish, so. Well, I'll just.
I will represent.
Okay.
Couple of them are at the job interview, some are out of town, some are back after work. City Albion Proclamation honoring AmeriCorps Vista, whereas AmeriCorps Vista has granted the college community ten Vista members, leader each year for three years, whereas individual Vista members, leaders, commit a full year of service to their community, living in the community and working alongside community members and organizations for the purpose of alleviating poverty, whereas the focus of the Build Albion AmeriCorps Vista Initiative is education, healthy futures, and economic opportunities, whereas in the first year in this program, community needs assessment is part of the required service year, whereas this Vista member, leader, all of them, yeah, committed a significant portion of their service year to crafting Albion Forward Survey, working with local organizations and individuals, finding gaps in previous assessments, finding questions and responses, design and implement a survey campaign, including social media, flyers, attendance at events, speaking to community members, organizations, sitting at tables at local establishments, generally connected to people where they are, whereas the Vista team collected survey data, codified responses, analyzed the data, and identified a number of positive recommendations for our community and local organizations, take action for the benefit of our community, and to make the needs of our, the needs of our most vulnerable citizens. Now therefore, I am the City of Albion, I am a great contributor on the opposite side of Albion, and the council recognizes, I think, the Build Albion AmeriCorps Vista Initiative, this first-year team for their work in Albion, and the past year.
So, I would just like to say that the Vista final report is done and should be on the website soon, and we still have the database, so if there are folks in the community who want to take a look at that, the survey is part of the report, so you can look at the questions that we were asked, if there are correlations or other analysis you wish to do, please contact me. We're happy to share that data. That data is open and available to anybody in the community. Thank you. Thank you. Agenda item, or item B under presentations, presentation from the Sister City Committee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm very pleased this evening to present this year's interns from our sister cities Wazilawa by U. France. As you know, this relationship has been going on for 20 years. There was just a celebration over there, which welcomed and honored this relationship. Well, we have three young men that are here, this for the month of July, that are working in Albion. This is Gregoire de Rockillange.
Very good.
Gregoire is going to be working at the Chamber of Commerce. His interest is international business, so great place for him. And this is Nathan Valiere. He is working at the Bone Theater. His interest is graphic design, multimedia, and advertising, so very good placement for him. And coming in the door.
Just in time.
Just in time. Is Tomas Ogier. He is working at City Hall. And his interest is in computer systems, so would like you all to welcome them. Welcome. Anything you'd like to say?
Thank you for welcoming us, and it's a pleasure to be here, so thank you.
Thank you. Merci. Thank you. We will, thank you, we'll move forward to public comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes, and we ask for proper decorum. Are there any public comments this evening on the agenda? Oh, wait, wait, on the, wait, wait.
My name is Rick Lang. I live in the sixth district at 810 Haven Road. Mary just mentioned a 20-year celebration of the Sister City relationship that took place in Wazilawa and Baye, and I just wanted to recognize the great job that our city managers, Cheryl Mitchell, did in representing the city and doing it proud, and even coming up with a nicely thought-out speech that was on the fly because she wasn't expecting to talk at a particular event. Great job.
Mayor, council.
Me. John Dunklin, sorry.
Any answers?
I live at 1203 Second Street, Albion, Michigan.
One question, is it related to the agenda?
Um.
Because there'll be another.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, seeing no other agenda comments, we'll move forward to the consent calendar. Item A is approval of a regular session minutes. Is there a motion for that? So moved. Moved in second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Items for individual discussion. Item A, request approval resolution number 2017-30 to approve the Michigan Municipal.
Karen.
Yeah, Michigan Municipal Lea- Liability and Property Insurance. Is there a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Moved in second, okay.
Okay. Mayor and council, this is the annual renewal of our insurance coverage that we have through MML, which is the Meadowbrook Insurance Company, and this is our ability to participate in a pool and get pretty much discounted rates, so this would be approving the premium for this coming year, which would be $178,710, and also we would be receiving the distribution of their excess proceeds for this year, it would be 19,074 cents. So that's the resolution that's before you for the renewal.
Are there any comments from council, discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'd ask for a request of a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item B, request approval resolution number 2017-31, a resolution to approve the WOW cable franchise agreement. Is there a motion? So moved. Support?
Second.
Excuse me, second. Moved in seconded.
Mayor and council, this is for the cable franchise agreement with WOW. It is not an exclusive arrangement, however, this one is for another 10 years, with the franchise fee that would be coming to the city based on 5% for the base rate and 2% for the PEG, Public Education Government Channel.
Is there any reduction or increase in?
Everything's the same.
Okay. Any discussion from council?
I would say the revenues generated tend to go down a little bit because subscribers go down in time.
Okay.
I was just kind of wondering, I know the last time they applied, there was a lot of discussion with the community as to lack of service, not good service. Has anything improved there?
I, I'm not sure. I know that the city's been, for I guess for a couple, number of years, the power, the authority had to kind of regulate local cable companies, has been, I guess, given to the Michigan Public Service Commission, I think. So, Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say, I believe within the last couple of years, they have went satellite, digital, and thus the service is better. Prior to that, they were doing the wiring, the ground, and I think that's, may have been where a lot of the, that service was coming from, but now they're satellite, they have service that's satellite-based.
Are there, is there, are there any other questions or discussion? Councilman Brown?
So, the 10-year contract period, has that been the case? It's been every, it's a 10-year interval?
At least the one prior was for 10 years.
For 10 years?
Mm-hmm. I wasn't here before.
I know. I just think in 10 years seems like a long time, and technology is changing and evolving. So, okay, thank you.
Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that the 10-year contract is sort of standard, and I agree with Councilwoman Brown that the technology changes, because this is a free market, as the service is declined, if they don't upgrade their system, we have an option to not subscribe, so I think that market forces will help keep them current. I know they're a little behind larger urban centers in what they can provide, but in terms of what they provide to towns and cities our size, it's about on par.
And this is based on the uniform contract that is recommended through the state, so they won't vary that much from community to community.
Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item C, discussion of changes, recommendations for the council rules of procedure. In front of you, there's a packet, and there's notes on it, so we're going to go through that very quickly. So, Councilmember French.
I don't mind having a conversation about this, since we don't have the language for all the things that you've got, this is the first time we've seen it, I would ask that we be given the chance to review it before we.
Okay.
Talk about it, so, I mean, I see the procedure that I thought we were thinking about was that we would, we would write a final document, the committee, the subcommittee that was formed, that would be reviewed by Colin Harkness, that it would then be reviewed with Colin's notes, and a recommendation brought by the subcommittee to council, and then the council would approve it.
I think, I think initially, after we met, Councilman Brown had requested just like an update from council, so.
Right.
That's going to happen, I guess I just wanted to let the council know, I guess the, I guess the scope of what was changed.
Okay.
You know, so it's not going to be.
Okay.
Too, too long, but basically, we met, the subcommittee, councilmember, councilmembers French and Brown and myself, we had our current rules, we had a copy of the sample rules from the Michigan Municipal League, and then we had the City of Port Huron's council rules as basically like the prototype. We went through, and the majority of what they had, we kept, we basically made some changes in terms of, let's see, I'll go through these really quickly. For example, under the section, if you go to page, it's page 2 of 13 in Port Huron, it's rule 2, just in addition to what they had, adding our sign-dye procedure in there as an organizational or an organizing portion of the council when the term starts. If you go to page 3 of 13 in Huron, basically rule 3 describes the various meetings, regular meetings, special meetings. We added closed meetings in there, we added study sessions, and then we kept the standing committing language, well, in our case, we would amend that to, as the charter currently has, to kind of prohibit that, but just added a couple of sections there. The, there's some other things, like for example, in, on page 3, note number, number 3, under kind of conduct of meetings, they didn't have, which our charter does have, which is, you know, provision for, you know, the manager to participate in the meetings, so that's added. The, let's see, skip forward. If you skip to page 5 of 13, that's where the majority of, probably where we spent most of our time in modifying this, basically we kind of kept the framework, which would, how it would operate in terms of agenda creation would be, if any of the council members wants something on the agenda for the upcoming meeting on a Monday, that would have to be, you know, submitted to the manager by noon of the Wednesday prior to the meeting, and what would happen is, you know, if it was, if it was a request or a resolution, or, you know, any kind of thing that would kind of require a great investment of time or research, the manager would basically be able to prepare a resolution memo to explaining why, you know, that would be, you know, burdensome, but then, you know, at the very least, it would come back by the next meeting after, the next regular meeting after the meeting was requested for. So we basically, there's kind of, kind of some slight wording changes there, but we agreed that we could, we could, that would work for us. There were some changes made to the special meetings and language that Port Huron had, and that's where, you know, that's going to have to be in line with the charter, obviously. Section, under rule, so rule 8, section C, where it talks about order of business, that would basically be just a wholesale, I guess swapping out of their, their order of business for ours, that's currently on our agendas. The only, you know, there's like a few small changes, and the other big thing is we, they had a rule number, rule number 14 in their rules of procedure on page 9, they had a large section on reconsideration in terms of, once either resolutions or ordinance that passed, you know, a particular timeframe in which they could be repealed if that was a desire. We decided just to scrap that, so, you know, we can have some discussions over that, but, you know, we felt that, that that large section probably wouldn't be needed. And then the other large section just had to do with the appendix, which is 11 of 13 in the rules, so they have a chart of motions. What we discussed is basically adopting the yellow sheet from the parliamentarian, the National Association of Parliamentarians, that Eleanor Seaworth shared with the council, so adopting that as a, an appendix for our council rules and just using that, so. I'll let Colin, you have to speak right now, but I'll let you look at it, we'll be in contact when we come back with revisions, and I'm going to have to find a way, maybe to get the Word document version of this, because I thought there was one, but it's only in PDF, so if we need to cut and paste, so.
I will deliver that.
So, yeah, so, that's basically an update. We went through it and spent a significant amount of time on it, so that's basically it. Are there any other questions or?
If I could just ask a procedural question?
Yes.
Because based on meetings that we had, the study sessions with Eleanor Seaworth, our clerk Jill Domingo had prepared a strikeout document based on the existing rules of procedure. So I wasn't quite certain how you plan to align that document with this one, will there be a reference document, so if you're looking for rule number one in our existing rules of procedure, you'll find it in rule number four of this new document, or how do you plan to make that alignment?
What we did, so we, we had Port Huron's on the table, and we had the other two documents, and then we said, okay, so on, on particular rules, where was that addressed in ours? And so, if it was addressed in ours, and they had a better language, we kept it, or modified a word here and there. If something was in theirs, in their rules that was not, excuse me, if it was in our rules currently, but it wasn't in theirs, we included it. So basically, it was a kind of effort to kind of harmonize between the, between the three, because there was like, in, for example, in ours, and I can't remember the exact subsections, but I know it was rule four in ours, after maybe rule 4.4, it starts to like motions. And so we said, okay, well, that really, that's already covered in, you know, the appendix for motions, so we don't really need to, you know, you know, just wholesale take it over. Uh, trying to think, because I have the other one here. Basically, the thought was, we read through Huron's, the things that we didn't like, or we thought should change relative to, you know, what would fit our circumstance or our situation, and made those changes, and then we kind of just went through ours and said, you know, what, like I said, what, what's in ours that's not in Port Huron's? Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. So, what I, I think I'm hearing or not hearing is that the document that the city clerk has, the strike through, is that considered as well when you guys were making the?
Yeah, that's, that's the, the version I used to pull from, from when I referenced our, our current rules, so. Councilmember French.
Thank you, if I could just add a little bit. I think what, what we arrived at was, Port Huron City Council Rules of Procedure was a very complete document, so much so that we felt that it did a better job of representing the direction that our mayor wanted the council to go in terms of rules. We had seen some issues that appeared, and we, we felt like Port Huron did a very good job of sort of articulating all of those things. So rather than sort of add bulk Port Huron to our city rules, we adopted, we started with the rules that Port Huron had, and moved those things from our city rules that we liked into Port Huron's document, because it turns out that was, that structure seemed to be better aligned with the direction we wanted to go in. So I think that, I don't have any qualms about what we're putting forward, I think we just need to get everything into a single document, that's not a sticky note added to a PDF. a PDF, and so, as I said seven weeks ago, I'll be happy to help in any way I can. I have a piece of software that can take a PDF document and convert it into a Word document. It's slow, it's copy pasting text, and I will happily do that, unless Cullen can talk to the city attorney at Port Huron and see if he has access to it in Word form or not, but anything I can do to help.
Any other questions? Councilor Barnes.
I really haven't heard the initial question from the city manager answer, and I went to the MML council session we had with Coco, and I was hoping that I could possibly hear Jill's position on the template that she made, that we said that we would add the changes based on that. That's it.
Well, I think the, the point is, is that, that those changes were included in the modifications we made to Port Huron. I think that's the, that's the point, because, you know, for example, if you look at, and this is, and this probably predates the clerk actually, but like, if you go to, in Albion's council rules, it's not as organized in terms of subject, because for example, like with rule five, public hearings is just floating right there, in the middle of motion to adjourn and, you know, a question about putting and calling the roll. So what, what, what we determined was that in terms of flow, structure and organization, Port Huron was kind of the optimal template, and so we took the, basically, the discussions we had with Coco, especially here, that's Saturday morning training meeting, and included those into Port Huron. So basically, the ideas are there, it's just, it's the order, so. Are there any other questions, comments, concerns?
Is there?
Councilor Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there an estimated time that you think that a final document would be, could be ready?
Basically, there's two, there's two factors. One is just having Cullen review, because there were a handful of places where we had questions about the vote totals for different things, and then there was, and when I say that relative to charter, because it's, you know, obviously, Port Huron's rules are based on Port Huron's charter, and we have a different charter, so there's some things that they might allow that we don't. Councilor French.
Yeah, just to articulate that, the ones that we talked about the most was, in order for you to have a quorum, you need four council people. So when you vote on a council issue, a resolution or what have you, do you need three votes or do you need four? Because if you have three, that's a majority of the folks that are there, but it's not a majority of the council, because you have absent council members, and we, we went back and forth about that a little bit, and, and so that's the one example, I think, that, that sort of speaks to that issue about voting. I think we came to an agreement that it has to be four, because we wanted a true majority of the council to approve any sort of resolution that we had. But there are, there are, we talked about scenarios when, when that might be difficult, like if you need a super majority to do something, like normally five out of six, if you only have four that show up, what's that number? Can you even vote on those sorts of things? So, so those are the things that we need to sort of get in alignment with our charter before we can sort of make that recommendation.
So, absolutely, and, you know, if the, if the committee is up to it, we could probably...
I'm going on vacation on Friday.
Oh, we'll talk to you, we'll, maybe, maybe have it where you're, we're there.
I mean, I could have, at least from my end, if you'd be at the council, certainly before the council meeting.
Okay. So that'll be the home. Thank you. We will move on to, under items for interview discussion, item D, which is a discussion of Victory Park Restrooms, which I think was raised by?
Councilor Spicer.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I was concerned, because the last time I had went into the Victory Park Restrooms, I, it wasn't a pleasant experience, and I also had a citizen, a conversation with a citizen, and they were also concerned about the smell of the Victory Park Restrooms. And so I asked you to have it placed on the agenda for tonight's meeting. However, during the last meeting and tonight, I took the time and opportunity to go to the restrooms in Victory Park, and lo and behold, to my surprise, they, they're in fine condition. So the fact that I had it brought up was, I wanted to discuss it, but really, there's no need to discuss it. They weren't smelly, that I recalled, and, you know, they weren't as poisonous, but that's probably because people used them in the last twelve years everywhere, but I didn't detect the smelly odor or anything, so I want to thank Dr. Mishell for getting on it, and she also did let me know that they, someone, a city worker had started to utilize a extra strength odorizer, and so the bathrooms in Victory Park are not smelling anymore, you guys, so. And thank you, thank you so much.
Are there any other?
Mayor, and if I could offer, we found it most helpful if our residents would use the receptacles and not the walls for what they're doing in there. But overall, quite frankly, the facilities need an upgrade, but that's a much larger capital improvement project, and perhaps if there's enough community interest, we could start a campaign for that, just based on the Holland Parker, we received a grant from Inbridge, it was fifty to seventy thousand for the upgrade and the handicapped accessibility for the restrooms.
Any other questions? Discussion. Thank you. Item E, update on nuisance properties litigation. Attorney Hartness.
So, there were three properties identified by our director of planning and our contracted code enforcement company that were particularly troublesome. The first one, fifteen, excuse me, fifteen twenty-one North Eden, which is the Ponderosa Building out near I-94, that one, I was a little bit trepidatious about, given that we've had a long time dealings with property owner, and I've been up to the Supreme Court with him on several things, but much to my astonishment and belief, after we served him with the lawsuit, I got a call from their attorney, and they are in the process of pulling the permits to have the building demolished. So, depending upon when they get those permits, the impression that I get from him is that that building should be down hopefully by the end of the summer or end of September. So that one is progressing nicely. Then we're, we have two residential properties, one is seven oh two North Albion Street. That one, we actually just obtained a judgment on, on June thirtieth, so they have until July thirtieth to either demo the property or advance us the cost. The procedure that we're going to follow is if they don't do it by that time, we'll file a motion to show cause for contempt of court and seek to have them held in contempt and potentially have a warrant issued for their arrest. That particular property owner, I believe resides in Grand Rapids.
Excuse me, attorney, I'm sorry.
Oh, Councilor.
When you say, thank you, Mayor, I apologize. When you say by that time, you mean the thirtieth of?
Of July.
Of July, okay, so if they haven't complied by the July thirtieth, you'll set it for show cause.
Right, I'll file a motion for show cause, and then we'll ask the judge to, these old women, contempt and potentially throw them in jail until they comply one way or the other. The other one is six oh eight Austin Avenue, we obtained a default judgment on that one May twenty-second, we're in the process of filing the motion orders show cause, they haven't responded. That particular property owner resides in Hawaii, that one's going to be a little bit trickier, but we're still going to follow the same process and, and seek an order for contempt. So, we've got judgments on two, and the other one should be coming down in the next couple months, so I just wanted the council to know that we are making progress on those nuisance properties.
Are there any other questions? Councilor Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just asked Attorney Hartness, is there, is that a bills, business on Austin Avenue? And if so?
To be honest, I couldn't tell you. I, I, the, the information that I get is, is just a description of what's wrong with it, the property owner and, and the address. I don't know what's actually there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments, questions? Okay, thank you. Item F, update on Kroll School Voting Location. So it, it came to my attention, I guess there was a public meeting, and did anyone from the council go? Did you give it a ten?
I, I did not attend, but it was my understanding that the Kroll School will not be closed next year.
Councilor Brown.
When you say next year, you mean fall of twenty eighteen or?
Yeah, that's the only, that's the only information I have.
Because the information that I have is that a decision will be brought before the Marshall Board before August first.
So.
And I attended the last Marshall School Board meeting, and it was not on the agenda.
So if I?
Councilor.
Sorry.
I also heard it would be open next year and the following year would be up to the high school, but for next year, it's supposed to be?
Councilor Barnes, yeah.
Word.
Right.
Yeah.
I met with superintendent of the school, Randy Davis. He informed me that he proposes to make a recommendation to the school board in September, after having community meetings, doing everything he can to contact the media to allow citizens to come to open forums. Also, I've talked with Marshall Board member Jim Lindsay, myself, Superintendent Davis, Hunter, Mr. Dunkland, Jim Dyer, and Art Kale, and I got a couple of other people I think I'm inviting, I thought I mentioned it to you, I may have, but I'll get with you. And we're going to meet, probably, I said coffee or doughnut or something, and we would discuss other options for that building being closed. As I stated to Mr. Davis, I, Maurice Barnes, can't come to the table complaining about the school being closed if I don't have a viable, sustainable plan for the building. He did state that there was a deficit, I think maybe a hundred and sixty or almost maybe up to two hundred thousand dollars deficit. That's not one hundred percent as far as the financial situation is. Some of the other questions that I carried to him as well, what about the entities that are in the building, has that been affected for that? However, they have been very cordial toward me asking about this meeting, we shall meet, and we are proposing to meet the second week in August, when Mr. Dunkland comes back from vacation, and we want to sit down and see what plans we can come up with. Also, there will be some discussion if someone really wanted to buy the building at the market cost, and they had a viable plan to sustain the building, that would be looked into, but if there was not a viable plan to keep it sustainable, they would not sell. So I'm, I'm ahead of the ball on this one, and it's the precinct that I serve, and I don't want to see anything like another dirumpel in the area, so I want to get out in front of this, but I just can't go sitting down at the table with these people and not having a plan, some resources, some networking and support, and what the citizens really want, because it is a viable building for us. I mentioned to Randy that we would love to keep our early learning, our Head Start, and possibly some type of cave facility in there, and we're, we're looking to the Kellogg Foundation for grants. They're doing a big deal in Battle Creek Central School System to keep it afloat. So I'm well aware of this, and we will be having commissioner, I had invited the commissioner to the meeting, I forgot, and so I think we're headed in the best possible way, with totally an open book, to keep this annexation situation regional and direct. And I hope that we can get the support of the citizens of Albion to come out to the meetings, to let the Marshall School District know what they want in their neighborhood. Thank you.
Councilor Law, or Councilor French?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Barnes, is, is this meeting open to any of us on the council, just you?
No, just me, and I'm thinking about, it's a private meeting that I've asked for certain people to come, that we can come in and look at some recommendations, and we want to get squat analysis and things like that, we want to keep it closed for, so whatever we do, we will come out, but Randy and his school board will make the final decision. In my precinct, I felt that I should sit down with these people before the cart is before the horse, that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Councilor French.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Barnes, for taking the point on this, this is, this is good. You know, the whole education system, regardless of where you came out on the side of annexation or not, really, the success of our schools in Albion depend entirely on enrollment. If we have people in our city who put their kids in the Kroll School, the pre-K level and the Head Start program, then that provides resources by definition to keep that school open. I know that there's a roof problem, and, and I think that infrastructure, it's always been, we deferred those maintenances when we had our own school system, and they're coming back again to sort of raise their head again, so I think that, that moving forward, public meetings have to happen. I would recuse myself, just in the interest of, of not wanting to be shown any kind of favoritism by being at your meeting, Councilman Barnes, that's entirely your precinct and your call. I would recommend that perhaps you consult with the college's education department as a possible representative if you wished someone from the college to be there. If not, again, I'm perfectly willing to recuse myself of that. And so, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I think one thing I'll just say is, my primary interests, or the, the reason why it becomes relevant to the city in a particular way is because it's a polling location. And so I think that that's, you know, a concern, because we don't want to make it harder for people to vote.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, so I'll follow up.
Mayor Brown, in response to the polling location and discussion with Clerk Domingo, the one site, if we're looking at a combined precinct, would seem to be the Opportunity High School as a location, but obviously, we won't move forward with that until there is a determination on if that building is going to be available?
Right.
And in what timeframe?
Are there any other comments, questions or concerns? Councilor Law.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one more question, Councilmember Barnes, will there be any information going out to the parents? You said you wanted to get information for, from people in the city about your meeting. Will there be anything going out to parents or any, anyone in the community to attend your meeting or anything like that?
As I stated in the beginning, Superintendent Randy Davis of Marshall Public School stated, do everything possible to notify the public through the media and through any other outlet he can, to make sure that the citizens know about the different meetings that will be held throughout the city and in Marshall concerning this agenda item. That's outside of my scope. I'm trying to have a meeting with him to get ahead of the game, so that I know what they're planning on doing, and I'm trying to put the resources, the network, and some foundations together. And I'm trying to put the resources, the network, and some foundations together to bring some viable options into the building.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll move forward to City Manager Report.
Thank you. Let me start off with some of the good news. Well, I had the opportunity to participate in the Sister City Exchange Program with Naswazi, Lawa, and Aye. And they were celebrating the twentieth anniversary of the Sister City Relationship with the City of Albion. And if I could ask Mary Slater to come forward. There's a proclamation, I won't read it because it'll sound like French with a Birmingham, Alabama accent on it. And they also presented us with a medallion from both cities. After the council sees that you may want to share it with them, so share with their committee. And it was truly a tremendous opportunity to have a cultural exchange, learn about their history, their education, and their middle school. They even had the middle schoolers working with 3D printers. And just, it was truly an amazing opportunity to, to gain an insight on what a different country and culture are doing relative to their youth and preservation of their buildings. You see buildings from the seventeenth and eighteenth hundreds that are still in viable use was really inspiring as we're looking at what to do with some of our older buildings. So I just want to thank the mayor and the Sister City Committee for allowing for that opportunity. It definitely was an intense learning experience, and I hope that one day my luggage will return back to Albion.
I might just, are you attendant?
Yes.
I might just put a little plug in here. The Sister City Committee is getting ready to send a group of children, eighth, ninth, tenth graders at that age, over there in September. And there will be another group of children coming from France to here to celebrate or to participate in the piano festival in the beginning of November. There's a regional piano festival that David Abbott hosts, and we hope to have some participants from France. So this is, this is, it gives me chills to be part of this. This is such a unique thing that we have with this city, and it's been going on for twenty years. And it's children, and it's adults, and it's music, and it's sports, and it's art. It's just incredible.
It truly is. And they were also celebrating their tenth year anniversary of the Sister City Exchange with Spain. So I made the overture that there might be interest from Albion, starting a Sister City Exchange with them as well.
If we did that, yes, go to Spain.
Thank you.
All right, so that was the first part. And I had, they had the regular meeting with M.D. in regards to the M-99 Superior Street upgrades. And they will be closing the intersection at CAS, as was indicated, so they can do some of that infrastructure work underground as well. And they anticipate it'll be about two to three weeks. They're also projecting that the concrete start being poured on the one side of the street, I believe it's the west side, for the gutters, and even the sidewalks that should be coming up. Right now, they're only running about two weeks behind schedule, so they're anticipating, knock on wood, they're anticipating having that section completed in time for the Festival of the Forks. They're looking at around Labor Day. So we're keeping our fingers crossed for that. And the Resilient Cities Committee, Resilient Communities, is having a picnic on, what's the paper? On July thirteenth, Saturday, at Howland Park. Fifteenth, I'm sorry, at Howland Park, starting at eleven a.m., lunch is at twelve. People are invited to come and participate, bring a dish if you like. And there will also be the Build Albion Fellows is having their basketball tournament that day at the park. So all the community is invited to come and participate. Also want to take a moment to thank everyone who attended and participated in the Community Vision Celebration. That was really a great turnout. It looked like it was going to be rainy, but everyone hung in there, and it wasn't that bad. And we had great participation, had a lot of feedback from our residents, so we're looking forward to culminating that and getting a report in regards to what do residents want to see and where. And I want to thank all the council members for your council member corner. They voted down the dunk tank that I had recommended. Although when it was the mayor who was going to be dunked, it was a lot of interest. But that was voted down. But specifically, I do want to thank Danielle Nelson, the staff from the Economic Development Corporation, Amy DePraise, and Neely. Kent, thank you. The Albion, what is it, Farmer's Market, Laura. Overholt. Stacy Levin, who did a lot of work in regards to pulling together some of the promo pieces and the signs. John Tracy was very much involved, and obviously, all of you. So I want to thank everyone for their participation, and we, oh, and Scott Kip, who I heard gave rides to council members on the ladder. Brave souls. And who made, it made the fire station available to us for that event. And all of the food vendors and other vendors who participated, including Double Vision. We had a great support from the community. And it was just a lot of fun, so I look forward to the next one. Although I said it was the first annual, I think we could pull another one off in the fall. Just saying. So it was, it was a great way to have people of all ages participate. So I think it was a great step in terms of engaging the community and building excitement about some of the projects that we have going on. The Dobbs, where they are talking about the Peabody Project, and the number of things that are going on in and around downtown as well as our neighborhoods. So it was a great day for everybody who had an opportunity to be a part of that. And I thought I had another note, but. We entered, oh, I sent you all an email that was forwarded from our Michigan, our Albion, Michigan Facebook page. And they are soliciting information from local businesses that they would love to help promote. So if you know of any, the contact information was provided on the email, or I can give you a copy if you have misplaced that already. So anything and everything we can do to promote our local businesses. And as you know, we now have a new Sprint store on Superior Street, and we have the Beauty Salon store, as well as the Beauty Supply Store. So there's a lot of new things going on in Albion, and I'm really encouraged to see some of the new stores are opened by young people, young entrepreneurs, so that's always inspiring for all of us. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any future agenda items? Councilor Brown.
I, I know that the council will be asked to vote on the Albion-Marshall Connector soon. And I'd like to add a discussion on the next agenda, so we as a council can kinda discuss it before it comes up.
Attorney Harkness.
City Attorney Ebo.
Okay. Do, do you want the, you want the exactly, at the next meeting?
If we can do it at the next meeting, great. I just want to put it on the radar that, I mean, it should get done sometime in the summer.
Okay. Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if this will happen at the next meeting, but an update from the EDC.
I think we have that scheduled for August.
Is it, will it be August? Okay, thank you.
Are there any other agenda items?
I would like to remind you that we need to have a discussion in regards to the water tower so we can give some direction to our consultant engineer to go forward with the application for the USDA grant.
Maybe those could be added to that, I don't know if they can, if those would take up. Yes, I'm trying to think, we need two, two separate study sessions, but we can discuss that. Okay, seeing no other future agenda items, everyone is here. Public comments. Mr. Dunklin. Persons addressing the city council should limit their comments to no more than three minutes. Property quorum is required.
I'll make this real short, because I believe everybody know why I'm here. My name's John Dunklin. I live at twelve oh three Second Street, Albion, Michigan. Hello to the council, the mayor, the city manager. My grandma owned this house where I stay for twenty-five years. My aunt has owned it for ten. I've owned it for sixteen. First, second, third, Wild, Carson, and Hartwell. No sidewalks, or they're bad, no handicap access. You cannot ride a bike in the street. A car must wait for another car to pass. Then that makes improper passing. To me, that's out of code. Is Albion held to be in code because I am? Any comments?
Are we still talking about the streets, John?
Yes, I am. I'm, I'm trying to get a comment on First, Second, Wild, Carson, and Hartwell. There are no handicap accessible sidewalks. There's at least two hundred to two hundred and fifty handicap or disabled people in my area, meaning me as one. I can't even let my grandchild walk down the sidewalk because it's too dangerous. At one point in time, there were police officers giving tickets in our area due to people walking in the street. How do you give a ticket for walking in the street when there's no sidewalk? From Eaton to Wild, the corner of my house, both sides, it's dangerous. There's no sidewalks either side, or the sidewalks are raised. And as the council, the mayor, this should be important because it's been at least forty years or more, nothing's been done in this area. And from what I have in my hand, is a hundred and twelve people, and I'll read this, what it says. Clean streets and drains for the First Precinct to the mayor, city council, and members. We, the members of the First Precinct, are very concerned and upset because of the poor maintenance or nor maintenance in some cases, in keeping drains, streets, and sidewalks accessible. Is there any comment? Mr. Dunklin, your concerns are legitimate. I live at Broadwell and Second, right down the street from you. You and I have examined those streets, some of those streets together. I have talked to some of the same residents, shared the same concerns with me in both my running for office. Municipal government has certain funding that can be used. And also, when I put in for my streets to be done, solely all of the six council people. And we have to vote on which streets we're gonna do. Under the three different city managers that I've worked with, we've had grass, we've had red spots on it, we've had yellow spots, and I think there might have been some green spots. And after the evaluation from our street department, then you get Harry and Kevin Markovich, which was great at it, they would come back with recommendations to the city council, and the council would vote. Those streets that you named, including Hartwell, Carson, West Broadwell, Wild, First, Second, and Third, were scheduled to be done. I was in a meeting with the mayor, city manager, and Kevin Markovich. We met downstairs in our office, and we discussed which streets would be stated to be done. I went home, I came back, Markovich came up there and named the streets, and mine were there. We went on the parking lot, and I called him a liar. He jumped out of his car, and, you know, he was upset. I said, "You guys said my streets were gonna get done." Best I can do. And it is a democratic process. Hate to go into this. Some of our city workers are called to other areas of the city when other events are going on in different parks, the cemetery. And our workers are taken off some of those assignments. Our street sweeper hasn't been done because there've been some other things being done around the city in the parks, and in cemeteries and other areas that had to have maintenance for the different events that were gonna be held in there. So not only precinct one, but other precincts also missed out on some street sweeping. We used to describe it here in council, in the old council, it's a crapshoot. And sometimes that happens. I, I'm not saying that's an excuse, but that's the reality of what we're facing. Mike Porter's come to me many times. He said, "Maurice, our street has never been done, Third Street, since the original paving was put in." And, and it's tough on me, too. I, I have to, I have to live there, and hey, you guys come knock on the door. I open the door, we sit down, and we talk, and I come down here, and I try to do what I can. But the city manager is the best person that I think that you would talk to in a private meeting to voice your concerns. And she may can explain you sometimes how we rob, pay, pay, pour, to get different things done around the park. I mean, when I found out that some overtime money was being used on a project, and I'm not gonna name that project, I was upset, but I left it alone. So there, there's, sometimes there's some things that are being done cause us to miss out.
John, for several years, I've brought up about that street, too, because you know my sister does on Carson. I happen to travel that one and Hartwell a lot. I understand that the city does not always have, I'm not making excuses, you know that. Has, has sometimes said that they have not had the fun to do certain things. I say to you, continue to bring it up, continue to bring it up, continue to have them come out. Because eventually, they have to have to see that those streets and things are really in a mess. I've brought it up, other people have brought it up, and I know that, you know, there's areas that they say is more needy. I don't, I don't know.
It can't be more needy because, excuse me. Like I said, my grandma owned this house for twenty-five years, let's count. My aunt owned it for ten. I've owned it for sixteen, that's more than two decades. So with two decades under your belt for being out of code, and then y'all give me a code violation, which I have the cleanest yard curb within the area of five blocks. How did I get a code violation? To me, this is weird. Can anybody explain how I got a code violation for rubbish when I clean up other people's yard in three blocks of radius in front of me? Do I have any comment on this abatement from the city council, the manager, or anybody?
I, I think we'll be best if you, if you, this is gonna be a short meeting, I'm assuming. We can talk and get copies, because we can see.
You don't have to have copies. John Tracy served it with two police officers. And I don't know if this is protocol, but he came to my house. Two police officers, the two police officers parked a half a block away. I sit there and watched on my surveillance system. I waited thirty minutes for all three of them to get out of their car. And then when my girlfriend shut the door to the house, they decided to get out the car and watch her go in. And then they wanted to stick a stake in my yard. I come out the yard, and he goes, "Here, take this," and I say, "No, speak first." Is this protocol that you use our public servants to come give an abatement ticket? From what I could see, he gave only precinct one tickets because my surveillance system is within five blocks or four blocks, so I saw every ticket he gave. And they was black people, not just saying that this is black racial motivated, but the simple thing is, there's white people in the neighborhood, too. I'm not trying to start trouble, but this, this council is out of code. You make me shovel my sidewalk, and then you can't fix it? That's wrong. That is totally wrong. We shouldn't have to keep bringing this up. I pay on three streets since I stay on a Y. I stay on the corner. I have a thirty thousand dollar truck, I can't even park on three of those streets. Why? Because they're too bad. But I still pay my taxes on time, I still pay on my three houses. This is ridiculous. All I have to say is, I am calling the governor because some- All I have to say is, I am calling the governor because somebody need to be let know about what's going on in Albion, because I shouldn't have to keep bringing this up after 14 years. After 14 years, we should be able to use a pair of crutches or a wheelchair or something. You're basically telling me, "Oh, put it back again because we don't have money for handicapped people that stay over there across the tracks." Nobody wants to hear that no more. And I'm very sorry for my attitude and have a nice day.
Are there any other public comments this evening?
Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager, city of Albion residents, good evening. My name is Gary Tompkins, I'm your county commissioner. You know, actually, I'm, I'm sorry that Mr. Dunklin left. Because I was gonna specifically speak to the very issue that he's talking about. I don't know if you had the opportunity in my newsletter, page three of my newsletter, I talked specifically about Act 51. His frustration is absolutely legitimate and it's not only in the city of Albion, but it's, it's everywhere, certainly I go. And I brought this to people's attention because what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to make it an attention getter for not only our residents to become more involved in the, in the process of making sure that it's incumbent upon our legislators to really understand that this process, the inequities that we see are real and that people are struggling right now. The money's the folks that you get and knowing that the, the cost of a, for a one-mile stretch or even a very small stretch of, of street in city of Albion is quite extensive in terms of its cost. And the money you receive is nowhere close to ever addressing the issues that he's talking about. He's absolutely correct in that. So when you look at this, a $420 million of Act One comes right off the top before we ever get a chance it ever gets funneled down into the other areas to be distributed amongst cities, villages, counties, and the MDOT. So really, I brought this to attention because I'm really starting to talk to legislators because they've got to have the political will to be willing to make a change on this. There's a lot of people that have their fingers in the pie, there's a lot of special interests that they don't want this to change because there's some real pie, I mean, it, it certainly gives advantages to others. In my, in my example, just about Calum County, just as a county as a whole, we got 51 more miles of roads in the county than Calum Zoo County, which is our neighbor to the west, but yet they get $6 million more in money than we do. So when you think about that, it's, that's, that's problematic. Now, they use population and more registered vehicles, but folks, at the end of the day, the cost of a road, no matter where it's at, is gonna cost the same. And if we're getting $6 million less than the county next to us, there's a reason why they have more than enough funds to take their, their situation and we struggle. So, and it goes all the way to the cities and villages too as well. I mean, if you look at this, what I did, I provided what I would say complicated formulas. If you look at these formulas, these formulas are complicated, there's provisions and exceptions and reasons and this percentage gets this way and this, it's a problem. And we, it's incumbent upon certainly us, but also I've indicated to my residents in the 7th district too, it's incumbent upon them to really pressure legislators. Yeah, go ahead.
I do have one question. So with, I know the, the state has the, like, the county, I'm getting the title of it, but this, basically the Association for Counties in the State.
Correct.
Have they, has there been any movement?
Well, you're a good point, because you've got a portion of the counties that are, that this is advantageous, that this formula is very written for them specifically. So some aren't gonna be anywhere in close to wanting this to change, where some of other of us are gonna be wanting this thing to change significantly. And I think I had a discussion with, with, with yourself and Mr. French about the road situation in the city of Albion and the difficulty is we don't have the amount of funds that you folks need to really do the job that you have. You've got roads that have, in your district, or in your, in your, in your, each one of your districts that have been touched in years and years. So I'm all about transparency and we need to bring these kinds of things to the forefront and he's right, it needs to be brought to the forefront so people are aware of what's going on. It's easy for us to be put, you know, for it to keep it behind closed doors and people don't really understand it. My goal is to make sure people are educated so that they know what's going on, so they know where that money's going. You wanna know where your tax money's going, you know? You, you work hard for it, you know, you wanna know where it's gonna be. So again, I just wanted to touch base and I'm sorry that he had, had left because really it is, look, I'm only one person, but I can tell you, you keep squeaking and people are finally gonna get to listen at some point in time. And, you know, we've got people that are up for elections and whatnot and that matters to people, you know? They wanna hear, they wanna hear your thoughts. So anyway, not to beat that horse, but really it's, I, I, certainly I think all of us share in his frustration because it's a problem. But when we say there isn't adequate funding, there really isn't. I mean, you folks are only, only can have so much that you're able to utilize. So I get that, so I can tell you, at least from my vantage point, I'm asking those tough questions to our state legislators because it needs to be asked. And sometimes you're not always the best, you're not always the favorite person sometimes when you see them at gatherings, but that's not what I'm in it for. I'm not in it for just friends, we're in it to, to do some, some good things for us. And then the rest of the comments tonight will just barely be purely basic, as I wanted to thank some people too as well. You folks already know the Calum County land bake and the 29 houses are gonna be demoed in, in the city of Albion, which is really, really positive news, it really is. As part of my Michigan political leadership training last year, we toured the city of Detroit, some of the neighborhoods in which they're doing this very thing, where they have demoed buildings, or demoed houses and basically they've replanted trees and gardens and they've done all kinds of positive things. And I'll tell you, it's, it's transformational for them. And it's not to say, but you've got some community gardens that are already being in place, so again, that's a very positive thing. I know it's tough sometimes when you're talking about eliminating some houses, but it's, 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 to me, I look at it as very positive, I'm sure you folks do as well. On the, on June 16th, I attended the Calum County Legislative Breakfast in Battle Creek and our discussion centered around economic security with panel discussion specific to healthcare, education, and tax policy, which is everything you guys have talked about tonight. Everything to that is talked about. The only frustration I will share with you is there was representatives from everybody. Debbie Stabinow, we had Justin Amash, we had Senator Noffs and Representative Bison. I think all of us know what the problems are. I mean, they, they talked a lot about the problems, but the frustration was, as I'm sitting there, is there really just wasn't a lot of solutions that were put to the forefront. And really, we can all talk about our problems all day long, but really, we need to have some solutions to go forward. So just, that, just for that. I wanna indicate to Ms. Lawler too, I do appreciate the opportunity at your town hall meeting on, on June 8th. I do appreciate you willing me, letting me sit in and being able to participate and say a few words to your, to your district precinct residents. I do certainly appreciate that. Saw Ms. Spicer there as well, certainly it was great seeing you folks. Attended the Albion's Juneteenth celebration as well. What a, what a, what a neat thing for, for me to be part of and even more importantly, I do appreciate Mayor Brown and Ms. Reed for you allowing me a couple of minutes just to speak to the, to the folks there and being able to join the procession down to Howland Park. I really do appreciate that, it meant a lot to me, so thank you very much. It was a great time, I had an opportunity, saw, saw Councilmember Brown there too as well, with Elijah Armstrong, right? Had some great discussion, absolutely. So it's really about connecting with people and getting with people and I do appreciate that. The Howland Park looks beautiful too, it really is a gem in your city. And also too, the community visioning, which you already have mentioned, Ms. Mitchell, and I'll just tell you, it was a great event, great community members, actually an opportunity for me to connect with more residents, which was great. I got to talk to some folks and the food was great and the farmer's market and everything that was there, so I do appreciate that. And having people have the, the empowering folks and residents to have empowerment in terms of what do you wanna see in that site? What would you like to do? I think they, people really do appreciate that, that they wanna be part of the process, so it's very positive. And then finally, in closing, my monthly newsletter, I'm sure everybody has been taking a look at that. It's certainly, it'll be available, hard copies at the library tomorrow because the holiday kind is gonna get pushed back. But again, I, I think it's been a great resource, a lot of people have taken advantage of it, it's a great resource so people know what's going on in the 7th district and certainly in the city of Albion. So that being said, I hope I didn't take too much time, but I hope all of you had a great Fourth of July too as well, with your family and friends and that's it. No questions for me at all? If not, I thank you very much, have a great evening, alright?
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, thank you, Tompkins, he gets off to everything. Good job.
I, I think it's important, I think that, to me, I think that's what you're expected, that you should, for me, it's an expectation, I really do. It's the only way that I'm gonna know what your residents think, what they want, what they, what their need, what their struggles are. So how do I, it actually directs me where I need to go to address specific areas, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Oh, I do, this popped into, oh yeah, any other further public comments?
Mayor, if I'm, I see the Dobbins are here, I didn't know if you wanted to mention the upcoming 5K race. The upcoming 5K race?
Yeah, sure. That was why I'm here.
Could you come to the?
I can talk about it.
Thanks, Bill.
Good evening, Bill Dobbins. Yeah, we have our, our second of three events coming up for Run Albion. It'll be a week from Friday on the 15th, starting at 6:30 p.m., run and walk, Fun Run, 5K, and 10K. And so we invite you all out. We had a great first event in May, the weather cooperated, we had, we had a good turnout for a first, first time and we look for that this, we already have our, more signed up online than we had previously. And so we're, we're looking forward to continuing to build and appreciate all the support from the city and especially the city manager, who was out there involved and we appreciate that. And invite everybody to come on out. This one specifically is to raise funds for the Albion Historical Society, it's called the History Shuffle. So it'll be lined by certain tidbits of history regarding the city. So as people that run really fast, they probably won't notice it. If there's people like me that have to breathe every so often, then they can get caught up on some real tidbits of history. So thank you and appreciate everybody's support.
Councilor French? It's Friday, the 14th?
14th.
Okay.
Like I said, the 14th, at 6:30. Whatever Friday, week from Friday is. Thank you.
Thank you. One additional future agenda item, this just crossed my mind, I, but the healthcare grant, can we get a update on what the sta, I mean, I know we're not coordinating that, but what, what the status is of that, except for anything, so. Or nothing official. Okay, no further public comment.
I'm here.
Oh, Councilwoman Spicer?
Thank you. Can we also, Representative Thompson mentioned the demolition of 28 some odd properties in Albion. Do we have an ID? Have we identified those? They're identified? Okay.
I believe those were. Were they included in your packet?
At one time they were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I could get that to you though.
Thank you.
Okay, adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.